Welcome to a meeting of your Planning Commission, the official local planning agency for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Planned City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovatively leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at planhillsborough.org.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the May 13, 2019 Public Hearing of the Planning Commission on Tampa Conference of Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. If you will please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any electronic devices that may be a distraction. If you wish to address the commission on a specific amendment, we ask that you please complete the appropriate public comment sign-in sheet at the back of the room. When addressing the commission, please begin by stating your name, address, and speaking directly into the microphone. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, second, and discussion, a vote will be taken. Roll call, please.
Good evening, Kyle. Dix. Green. Joseph. Chris. Marino. Willman. Thrower.
Here.
Wilds.
Here.
Dickerson.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Doughty. Thank you. You have a quorum.
Okay. Thank you. First up is Tampa Conference of Plan Amendment 19-04.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission staff. I'm here to present on Tampa Plan Amendment 19-04. This is in the Westshore Planning District. And I do have an aerial. The outline of the site is in the blue with the black line. This is West Laurel Street and North Spruce. The interstate is out of frame, but if you were to get off the interstate, you can just get right on Lois. I'm sorry, I said Spruce. I meant North Lois Avenue. And you can hop on Lois, and that'll take you right to the mall. And we have Spruce in the north. This is a multifamily complex in the north. This is a City of Tampa Public Works Facility, which I'm pointing at with my cursor. I have the Carver City-Lincoln Garden Civic Center here, and then Public Works and Fleet Maintenance all through this area. This is the Loretta Ingram Civic Center with the orange star. And then single-family detached homes to the south. It is a privately initiated small-scale amendment at approximately .81 acres. And the request before you would be going from Residential 10 to Residential 35. Here's some site pictures. This is the corner of West Laurel Street and North Lois Avenue. This is that multifamily development I pointed out earlier on my aerial. So this is North Lois right here and West Laurel on the bottom of the frame. And here's just another view. This is a portion of the subject site. It comprises several parcels, but this is a portion of the subject site that's fronting North Lois Avenue. And then these are two other subject sites that front North Lois Avenue. And then this was an interesting picture because these houses basically back up to a City of Tampa drainage ditch and then the further on, the City of Tampa Public Works Facility. So when you're walking down North Lois, you can kind of see it in between, in the distance and between the two houses. And these are both the subject of the Plan Amendment site. Now I'm on West Laurel Street. This is a vacant parcel along West Laurel Street that is also part of the amendment, and I'm facing north. This is another portion of the subject site along West Laurel Street. And this is another portion of the subject site along West Laurel Street. I've moved further down West Laurel. I'm looking east right now. On the left-hand side of your frame is the buffering that the City of Tampa has done for their Public Works Facility. That is designated Regional Mixed Use 100 on the future land use map, which I will show you next. And it's interfacing those single-family homes across the street, which is Residential 10. Just to give some context, when I took this picture, the subject sites were behind me on the side of the street where the buffering and the wall is. I just walked down a little bit further. So I don't normally show an existing land use map, but because of the development pattern in this area, we thought that it would be wise to show that. So the parcels are single-family slash mobile home, which is the yellow, and then vacant is the light gray. That whole Public Works Facility, including a City of Tampa drainage ditch that kind of backs up to the subject site, this is all public. It's all the blue. And this is that multifamily that I showed you earlier. When I kind of peeked between two houses and could see a view of the City of Tampa Public Works Facility, I was like, right here. And so you just kind of have that straight shot. And then when we're walking down Laurel, this is where the wall was showing that buffering. And you can kind of see a little bit of the interstate to the south. This is the adopted future land use map. The subject site's Residential 10, and then we have Regional Mixed Use 100 to the north. Generally, in the area, we're just seeing Residential 10 and Regional Mixed Use 100. Regional Mixed Use 100 is a very intensive land use category. It is the City of Tampa's most intensive outside of the Central Business District, which is downtown Tampa. And then this is the proposal would be requesting Residential 35. This would increase the density from a potential of eight or existing, the applicant has up to eight units that could be on the site with the Residential 10 future land use category. This would increase that to a potential of up to 28. It would also increase the square footage allowed from about 12,000 to 21,000 square feet. However, the subject site wouldn't be able to utilize all that square footage. It would have to meet the locational criteria and the comprehensive plan. And this amendment would not remove that. The applicant would still have to meet that to utilize any of the square footage. We did send this out for agency review, and Randy Gores is here from the City of Tampa to kind of explain after my presentation that the Land Development Coordination Department did have an objection, but the Planning and Urban Design Department did not. So Randy will speak after I'm done on that decision. This is consistent with several comprehensive plan policies. We did find that this would provide a more sensitive transition in density than what is currently there right now. It's a big drop-off between the Regional Mixed Use 100 down to that Residential 10. It's a little dramatic. So we did find that this would meet that policy direction about having sensitive transitions. North Lois Avenue is also a collector roadway, and we did find that this would be appropriate for that area, and it would encourage new housing on underutilized land, which is another policy within our comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan would also seeks to promote housing choices within proximity to employment civic uses and transit corridors. There's a number of civic uses in the area. The Loretta Ingram Center, the Carver City-Lincoln Garden Civic Center are all located near the subject site. And we did find that this would meet those policies as well. And lastly, the comprehensive plan seeks to designate multifamily areas where greater multi-residential development is desired. Our comprehensive plan states that the district, the Westshore District, will have an estimated residential population in excess of 36,000 by 2040. And there are several large-scale multifamily developments in the area, but the Westshore District will need to provide that more areas as multifamily to allow that lower-density transitional development to support the increasing residential population in this area. And we did find that that is in line with all of our comprehensive plan policies about increasing residential density in this area. And so with that, Planning Commission staff did find it consistent. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Staff?
Good evening. Randy Gores of the city's Planning and Urban Design Division. As Jennifer mentioned, the staff over the city, in addition to the LDC, several other departments reviewed it. There weren't any objections from the transportation or the other utility departments. Land Development Coordination did have an objection. Their report is in the staff report, but primarily it was in regard, they felt that the increase from R10/R35 was still adding more density in the area that was going to affect the character of development around the site, and primarily the single-family development across the street on both sides in an area that historically, from the city's perspective, has been very sensitive to change. So they had an objection based on that. They also cited, there's a, I think you may be familiar, where there's a provision in the comprehensive plan that says if you're seeking a plan amendment in an area and you don't have the same plan category adjacent or less or more, then that creates some red flags, and city council is required to look at it and they can overturn it. But staff typically objects because it doesn't meet the locational criteria or the provision in that plan. So part of the objections from LDC were mostly procedural because of the comprehensive plan, the way it's written, and how we view plan amendments. The other part was they felt it was inconsistent because of the increase in density.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. So Randy, before, now, so can you explain the urban design division's point of view on this?
We didn't have any, there weren't any actual written comments. There were some verbal comments, but nobody felt strong enough to actually put anything in writing and send it over. You know, basically, it was a little bit echoing with LDC. It was just a, mostly from the concern that this is a neighborhood that historically has been very sensitive to change. And there was some difference of opinion in whether or not this change would be such that would create, you know, some far-reaching changes in the future, or if this was just filling out the block. So our division didn't have any, even given the opportunity, put something out in a comment in writing, they didn't. So I would just say just go with the comments that you received.
Okay. Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak on this item?
My name is Silla. I reside at 615 Luzon Avenue. Huh? Full name? Cheikh. C-H-E-I-K-H. Middle initial T as in Tom, and the last name Silla, S as in Sam, Y-L-A-L-A. I reside at 615 Luzon Avenue, Tampa, 33606. I am an architect and an urban planner, urban designer. That's been in private practice in Tampa for 31 years. We've done a lot of work in the area. I've been retained by the property owners, not a developer, property owners, who basically have joined hands and have decided to seek the plan amendment. So in this particular case, with your indulgence, can I ask Jennifer, do you mind if I can, if we can have the aerial at the very beginning that you had, which I think was great? Staff, Jennifer did a wonderful job in making a case for the plan amendment in this particular case, so much so that I really don't think that I can add a whole lot to it. But if you just look at essentially the aerial, I mean, I can say that Carver City is a very important neighborhood and community. And I'm pleased to be, I'm pleased and honored definitely to have been retained by the property owners to work in that neighborhood. However, in this particular case, our focus is essentially on a block area that, number one, is at the north edge of the neighborhood that we're talking about. So it's not located anywhere in the center, okay? Number two, you really have a great deal of development taking place, Regional Mixed Use 100. And right now, when you look at it, the single biggest landowner in that area is the City of Tampa. And quite frankly, 10 years from now, I think that things are going to be different. So essentially, by closing the block, and that's really what we're talking about here, is the closure of the block and the establishment also of the edge of the street. By doing so, we're not requesting really Regional Mixed Use 100, no. We're going for something that's much more modest, and that's mixed use, not mixed use, Residential 35, to create a transition between the Regional Mixed Use and the single-family that is to the south. In my view, we just want to focus in that area. Now, if what we're proposing was located in the middle of the block, okay, I think it would be a tough sale. But in this particular case, the property owners have joined hands and said, hey, look, we know that change is coming, and they want to play a role in that particular change. In this particular case, it's a transition that basically will help between the Regional Mixed Use and the single-family area. So that's really what they're trying to do. And these are long, long-time residents of the area. Mr. Collins, who's there, is one of the six residential property owners. Mr. and Mrs. Rodriguez have been there for a long time. I made their kids, but I cannot call them kids because they are grown-ups. So it's not like a private developer that came in and basically put together, bought properties, and decided, well, we're going to build this project. So in this particular case, I'm urging the commissioners, yes, to take into consideration the point of view of everybody, but clearly, clearly, there are private property owners that have bought very intense developments. And if they decide in their own wisdom and vision, knowing that things are going to change, and they're not bothered, quite frankly, by the big development, the RM, Regional Mixed Use 100, they're not bothered by it, but they want to come together and establish basically the transition. And with that, I'm going to close it, and we'll be open to respond to any question. And I thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone want to speak under public comment for this item? If you'd like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Hi. My name is Kenya Sutton, and I reside at 4202 Union Street, Tampa, Florida, 33607. I am a resident who has also lived in the neighborhood for many years. Although I look young, I am 44 years old, and I was born and raised in Carver City. I'm affected by the development, the multifamily homes that are on the other side. Like I said, I live on Union Street, and I live right in front of the large multifamily buildings. Me getting into work, going to work, trying to get out every day, it is an inconvenience. People who live or who want to build on that property, several of them don't live in the neighborhood, so they don't understand how crowded and how congested it already is. We have children in the neighborhood that are trying to cross the street. My mother lives across that lot, and she can't ride her bicycle or scooter or get across that street just because of how busy and crowded it is. So as we said, we want to look for the future, and we don't mind building and making our neighborhood okay. But although it is on a corner, it is very dangerous for our, I'm a teacher, and I have students who are on that corner as well, and I see them there in the morning. As a resident of the neighborhood, they do have multi-parking garages. Those residents who live in the neighborhood across the street, although they have parking there, they park in front of our homes, and they walk across the street. And since it's public property, there's really nothing we can do about it except say, hey, can you move your car? We can't have company at our own homes because you live across the street and you decide not to park there because it's easier for you to enter the building that's closer on the sidewalk. So I just want you to take that into consideration of somebody who's actually living on the property and living in the neighborhood, not just owning the property and trying to expand. This is from a resident who is actually in the heart of it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Patricia Givens. I live at 4302 West Laurel Street, two blocks down from where the property rezoning will be. I am the president of Carver City-Lincoln Garden Civic Association, and I'm here to represent the association as well as surrounding community members. We do oppose the rezoning, reason being, we've been fighting and constantly fighting, trying to preserve the community, to keep it as a single-family home community. As many of you know, we are already surrounded by apartments. We have commercial businesses. We have restaurants, malls surrounding our community. We're right in the middle of that, and rezoning that property is going to be a Pandora's box for us. Because once you rezonate, it's going to open a door for everyone else to come in and to rezone the vacant properties in that community. So we can't say no when you've already opened that door for a developer or for someone to come in and to build something other than a single-family home. We do ask that you really consider that, be mindful of the community. We do want to keep it intact as a family, single-family homes in that community. The fourplex, multiplex building is going to stick out like a sore thumb. I saw the design of the building. It does not mesh anything within the community. It just looks like an office building. And it's going to really take away from the effect of the community. And also rezoning it, also, I know he said they got consensus from neighbors. We have a lot of neighbors that's opposed to it. There's a petition going around right now that a majority of the community is not for it. And I heard that, you know, we don't like change. It's not that we don't like change. We want to better our community, but we don't want to be overburdened with apartments, with commercial businesses in the community. We're right in the middle of everything right now. We want to try to keep that intact as much as possible. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Please come forward.
My name is Nancy Sutton, and my address is 4116 West Laurel Street. I am adjacent to the property that is the proposed rezoning of the property. I too have been in the neighborhood for a long time. I've been there over 50 years. And I am not opposing to my neighbors rebuilding. I am opposing to the rezoning of the neighborhood. As Ms. Givens has just said, we'd like to keep our neighborhood as a single-family neighborhood and not as all of these multiplexes. I have a grandchild and some nieces and nephews who walk the neighborhood, ride bicycles in the neighborhood. I am concerned of their safety. There are certain times in the afternoon where I cannot even get out of my house. I don't go out at certain times because of the density of traffic. And if we build those houses in there, as she said, it's going to open up a floodgate, and we'll have all of these houses coming in that are multifamily. And each family that comes in usually have at least two, sometimes four automobiles. So that's going to affect the traffic flow in there. We are asking that you consider us and keep our community as a single-family community and not as these multiplexes. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else under public comment?
I'm sorry. I do have petitions that have been signed, and I don't know. I have petitions.
Yeah, you can give it to the recording secretary. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak under public comment? Please come forward.
My name is Glorine McNair. I live 4321 West Green Street. And I oppose the rezoning of this property because I was recently here, and I know what the intentions are. Once one piece of property is rezoned to have multifamilies, then other additional properties will be up for rezoning. The property behind me was up before you not too long ago, wherein someone wanted to put 20 units right in my back door in the middle of the community. So I oppose rezoning of the property because, as I said, it's going to open a floodgate, plus the density and the transportation problems are already there. The people in the area that is up for rezoning right now are already blocked in. The only way they can get out is to come out on Lois Avenue. I go out on Spruce Street to get out of that community, and it is a floodgate of traffic. It's very difficult to maneuver in there. I oppose that because of the density that it will cause in the community. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Any other public comment? Would the applicant like to respond? You have three minutes.
Mr. Chairman, board members, the theme that I'm hearing from most of those who oppose, by the way, it's not a rezoning, it's a plan amendment. So we're not in the rezoning process. So we're just talking about the amendment of the plan, but fundamentally, we can consider it to be the same thing. So, yeah. Okay. I respect everyone's point of view here, and I admire you for being involved in your community. As an architect and an urban planner, I've always felt that to make a neighborhood, you really need folks who live in that neighborhood really be involved in the process. The theme that I'm hearing for those who oppose the project, or I should say, the plan amendment, is floodgate. Floodgate. There's a trickle, and there's a floodgate. So what I would suggest to you, and suggest to everybody, is that a decision be made strictly on the merits of the project. It's one thing to talk about a project that is about 28 dwelling units, okay? That is R35. But it's another to talk about a regional mixed-use project. Those are very, very different in terms of scale, in terms of scope, in terms of intensity. So anytime a project comes before the Planning Commission or the City of Tampa, and you are concerned about it, I think rather than just saying floodgate, okay? I think each project has to be looked at based on its own merit, based on what you are concerned about. So that's the floodgate issue. The last, am I done with the three minutes?
Please direct your comments to the board.
To the board? Okay. All right. Thanks. I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. I lost my train of thought. I apologize. But in this particular case, oh, yeah, the other issue is just transportation and density. You can look at it really from a negative side, or you can look at it from the positive side. As an architect and an urban planner, urban designer, I happen to believe that to make a livable city, we need density. The more people we have living in one area, the more that area becomes livable, the more you can fight crime, and actually, you reduce traffic, quite frankly, when you have more people living together. So, and the best example that I can cite is basically Westshore Palms. And I've driven over the weekend looking at it. It's a fantastic area. Multifamily is not a dirty thing. It's a good thing. And in your policy, quite frankly, there's an encouragement for more people to basically live in multifamily. And it's something that basically is needed, quite frankly. And then as far as traffic is concerned, crossing the street, Lois runs north-south. And it's taken by many people, quite frankly. So it's not the development in that area that brings that traffic. It's just that that's the nature of transportation. So those are really the three points that I wanted to make, and that is just the merits on making a decision based on the merits of each project. The second one is basically transportation and density. So anyway, I appreciate, Mr. Chairman, your indulgence.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Green? Oh, Green? Yeah, I anticipated.
You saw me reading for it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have, I have some concerns about this proposed amendment. Although I, I, I'm sort of torn. I understand the city's position on this, and of course, my friend Silla, who's proposing this amendment. But I do feel that the, that this community is sort of constantly, sort of warding off the higher-intensity development around, particularly around the edges. But I did want to ask Randy one, one question about, about Lois Avenue. Because here's, here's where I think, and I could be persuaded one way or the other on this one, but, but the, you know, what is the city's position on Lois, Lois Avenue itself? Because you have it from, is it Union? Is that the street at the bottom of the site? Up to Spruce? It's sort of, well, it's an asymmetrical street, essentially. You've got, you've got single-family houses on one side, you've got, you know, higher-density development on the other side. And of course, this is a direct route to International Mall off the interstate. And are there any traffic signals on Lois?
Well, there are traffic signals at, I believe, at Cypress, and then up at, uh, voice called it.
Spruce, Cypress, yeah.
And then at the, at the end, at the, near the International Plaza. You know, the, I'm not sure what, what your, what your question is on Lois. It is, and I don't know if there's any more improvements planned for Lois, that's not something I didn't look at. But there has been some improvements made to Lois for improving efficiency and, and the turning of it. But it's a high-traffic, high-traveled road, we all know that.
Right.
And it's getting traffic from International Plaza, as well as from Kennedy Boulevard.
Okay, I'll, I'll stop, I have to think about this, just more.
Any other questions? Commissioner Willman?
Thanks. I have a question for Jennifer. On the map, the future land use map that you had shown in the presentation, maybe you can go to that.
The adopted or proposed?
Either one.
Okay, that's adopted.
There's a, right above the subject site property, there's a hatched box. Can you tell me what that is?
It's, um, it's the drainage ditch, it's water.
That's the drainage ditch?
Yeah.
Okay. And do you know if that drainage ditch is assigned to the city site, or if it's for the roadway?
It's part of the city's site.
Okay, so it's for, it's site development, so.
Yeah.
So all of that residential ten that's on the north side of the subject site is part of the City of Tampa property, and it's either drainage ditch or some kind of.
Yes, or some kind of maintenance facility. Yes. And it's, it's quite a, it has, that's where they bring all their public works trucks, and when you drive down there, it's, it's quite a site to behold in interfacing some, some single-family homes. But the only access is off of Clark Avenue from Spruce. So we kind of traveled all the way down Laurel, up Grady, and this is where you can get into all of that activity.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? Commissioner Chris?
This might be for Randy, but is it the city's long-term view to hold on to the, to the maintenance yard, or whatever you call it?
I'm going to say yes, because there is, there aren't any plans that I know of otherwise. The city hangs on to its land, especially for stormwater retention, pretty much until they can find a better way of taking care of that. I mean, if we don't want to be giving up retention areas when stormwater's a big issue. So to my knowledge, there's no plans to do anything other than what they're doing with it.
I had a quick second question, if that's okay?
Okay, that's fine.
And maybe Commissioner Moreno could even answer this, but how, how far is this site from the proposed West Shore Intermodal Center? Would you classify it as within a easily walkable distance?
Uh, that's located where again?
At the.
Well, they say a quarter mile is a walkable distance, I'm not sure if that's a quarter mile or not.
It'd be more than that?
Yeah.
Maybe half a mile?
If I may. So it's near Jefferson High School, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I can just look that up real quick on my phone while Randy continues to answer questions.
Okay. Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just south of Grace Street there, like, you can kind of see like where the map starts to change color, but I can't see what that is. It looks like it's, you know, brown, similar to the proposed land use here. And I just wanted to find out, is that also Residential 35, or is that?
That's existing.
A higher.
Are you looking at the future land use or the existing land use map?
I'm looking at the, the existing, I believe, here, yeah, the existing.
It's on the adopted future land use map that's in their packet.
Oh, all the way up here?
No, all the way to the south. The bottom, by Grace, like, coming over to the, go, take your cursor to the left.
To the west, Jennifer, in the left-hand corner.
So you kind of like, yeah, so see like right below you, yeah, like right there, it seems like that's kind of.
Oh, a sliver?
Sliver, and I'm just curious if you just knew off the top of your head if that was.
I can look that up as well, but if memory serves me correctly, that, I believe that was Residential 10, but I can, I can check.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Moreno?
This question's for the applicant. Did the applicant meet with the Neighborhood Association?
You can come forward.
I'm sorry.
Did you meet with Lingards Carver City prior to today?
We went to one of their meetings 10 days ago or so, and we had an opportunity to make a presentation, but we didn't find them receptive.
Yeah. All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
I, I'll follow up on Commissioner Chris's question earlier. This is quite a walk to West, to the, at least to Jefferson High School, it's about three miles on Google, so I thought it was closer.
And to reply to Commissioner Powell's question, it looks like along that, that edge is then fronting on Cypress, and it's Residential 20 in the brown. And then on the other side of Cypress is more of the RMU 100. So the land use on that edge of, of the neighborhood does change and get more dense.
Any other questions? Comments? Commissioner Willman?
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, I had the wrong address, it's .7 miles away. Yeah, I thought that that was incorrect. So that's what you get for doing things on the fly.
I didn't think it was that. Yeah. Commissioner Willman, did you have any other comments, questions? Someone like to make a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move that we find City of Tampa Plan Amendment TA CPA 1904 consistent with the City of Tampa Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, do we have a second? We got a motion by Commissioner Dowdy, second. Second by Commissioner Willman. Any further discussion? Questions? Okay, all in favor of the motion as stated, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Those opposed, please raise your hands. Okay, those in favor, it's, one, two, six in favor, and Commissioner Joseph, Commissioner Wilds, and Commissioner Green is that, are those opposed. So Commissioner Joseph, Commissioner Wilds, and Commissioner Green are opposed, all the others are in favor, motion passes. Six to three. Okay, thank you. We are going to move on to Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment 19-03.
Evening, Commissioners. Jay Collins playing Commission staff. Up next for your hearings tonight is TA CPA 19-03. This is generally in the South Tampa Planning District, this is in the Gandy-Sum Bay South neighborhood, this is along South Manhattan Avenue. This is an aerial of the site, the site itself is the highlighted portion of that, it's a pretty large site at about 16 and a half acres, it is a vacant site. If you'll notice on the aerial here, kind of looks like, oh, what would you say? Like, like a tomahawk, like a hatchet, like if you were at an Atlanta Braves game and you're doing it, right? So the handle of that hatchet down there is actually owned by the City of Tampa. That's a 50-foot right-of-way that is going from Interbay all the way up north to meet with the area to the north of there, which is actually owned by Robinson High School, that 50-foot right-of-way owned by the City of Tampa. Directly to the west of that is a 14-acre site that is owned by the state of Florida. Both of these are thought of and used for greenways and trails, there is a plan for a South Tampa greenway, we'll talk about that in a bit. Some of the other things that we have in this general area, directly to the south of the subject site, you can see some industrial uses that are there, you can see the intensive commercial uses, some open storage that is there. As I'm moving to the east along Interbay Boulevard, there is a, again, Transitional Use 24 industrial piece of property that is currently vacant or underutilized. Moving a little bit further up to the north, as I approach Manhattan Avenue there, or excuse me, as I approach Lois Avenue, you can see yet again another intensive commercial use, an open storage facility. And then moving up Manhattan, going to the north, you'll see some multifamily housing on both sides of Manhattan, excuse me, of Lois right there. And then further afield, if I just expand myself further and further back, you can see the single-family detached uses that are surrounding this area. So background, this is publicly initiated, this is a regular-scale amendment, just over 16 acres. Currently, the use is transition, excuse me, currently the land use is Transitional Use 24, and staff is requesting public semi-public. This is an amendment, as this one and the next one, to the Transitional Use 24 Land Use Viability Study. Basically, what that is, is a staff-initiated study with the cooperation of the City of Tampa to look at this land use and ask the question simply, is this still a viable land use for this piece of property, as well as what's going around it with the trends? So we're asking the questions such as we did with Robinson High School in the last, the last cycle, what is the best land use for that piece of property? How does it best fit into the neighborhood? So continuing on, this is just one of the site pictures. I'm actually standing on Manhattan Avenue in the, the actual bicycle lane, if you will, the actual greenway, and looking at the site. Again, the site is vacant, 16 and a half acres, I missed the shot of the Osprey, there's a lot of wildlife out there. This is Manhattan Avenue looking south, so again, I'm standing in the greenway. So to my left is the actual parcel, and to the right, Manhattan Avenue, and you can see some new construction with some of the townhouse development that is going along Manhattan Avenue. Again, just a closer picture of those townhomes. So just a little bit north from where we just were, this is the intersection of South Manhattan Avenue and West Pintor Place. Basically, just to give you a flavor of some of the single-family detached neighborhoods that are in the area. And this is further afield on the other side of those townhomes that are being constructed, the intersection of South Manhattan Avenue and West McCoy Street. This was a great picture, it kind of wraps a lot of everything together to talk about when you have a neighborhood node. There's a convenience-serving good store there, there's multifamily housing that is being built, there is a park directly across the street, there is transit right there with Route 17. And I don't have a picture of it, but just on the other side, there's actually another small school. So again, one of the neighborhood nodes in the area. So the adopted future land use, the Transitional Use 24 is outlined there in black, Transitional Use 24 to the south, as well as areas to the east. We talked about some of the uses along South Manhattan, those being the multifamily, as well as the neighborhood-serving commercial uses. You can see the Residential 20 to the west of Manhattan Avenue, basically, again, Manhattan, if the cursor and I will agree with one another, is running north-south right here, so you can see all of the Residential 20 that is going up and down on South Manhattan, and you can see Residential 10 with the single-family detached neighborhoods further afield. If the amendment were to be adopted by Tampa Comprehensive, excuse me, by Tampa City Council with the public semi-public. And so what are some of the potential intensities and densities with this actual land use amendment? Currently, these are in public ownership, but it does have a Transitional Use 24 amendment, or excuse me, Transitional Use 24 land use. So we need to talk about what that existing potential is. This is also part of the conversation about why this land use study is of value to the city and also to the public, because what we're doing is we're actually providing the public a true reflection of what is occurring in their neighborhood and what is occurring in the city. This is property that has been owned by the state for a trail and for a park, yet the existing potential of this site is just under 400 units of housing and just over a million, or a million square feet of commercial or industrial space. However, the state of Florida has bought the property for a park. So you can see part of the disconnect there, why the Transitional Use 24 may not be the best land use for this site. So public semi-public, again, government-owned facilities, whether they are recreation facilities such as a park or a wastewater treatment facility, but it can also be churches, hospitals, schools, such as Robinson directly to the north. Now, the potential we put is not applicable. Why? Because the FAR in the density is not specifically defined. What I mean by that is Transitional Use 24 has an FAR of 1.5, it has a density of 24 units to the acre. Public semi-public does not define those intensities and densities, rather it is looked at with the idea of saying, what is compatible to your surrounding area and what is a public So consistency, there are quite a few policies for this. Obviously, recreation in open space, parks are good for people, I think we can go through that, not actually have to put those policies there. So we'll specifically talk about providing a greenway from the Gandy Bridge to Picnic Island, and further that greenway from Picnic Island into downtown Tampa. So those are actual policies that are called out in the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Future land use, this kind of does go again with the idea of the public semi-public. Areas adjacent to or within neighborhoods that are planned for non-residential shall be developed in a manner that is sensitive and compatible. So that again talks about the compatibility issues of when you do develop under public And lastly, for another policy out of the coastal management, acquiring land within the coastal high-hazard area, this is a large piece of property within the coastal high-hazard area, to provide recreation opportunities, as well as to reduce the risk of property damage from any type of flooding that may occur. And you can see from that picture there, there are a series of ditches that crisscross through this, I'm sure for an amenity, we can call them canals in the future. And so with that, Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. I thank you, and this concludes his presentation.
City of Tampa, does City of Tampa have anything to say on this, or?
There were no, no objections to this plan amendment.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on this item? No public comment? Questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Dowdy?
Nope.
Any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner?
If I could just, I'll make a comment and then a question. So I, I live in this area, and, and this item actually came up at our Port Tampa Civic Association meeting, so, just so I can exactly tell my neighbors, if, so this, this will preserve land for recreational use, and if it ever is to change for development, it has to come back to the Planning Commission and then to City Council.
You want to talk about how parks are developed in the city?
Well, if it's, it's meant to be for public, public use and recreation, but the concern, the concern was this is a lot of property, and, and, you know, some neighbors had, you know, the Transitional Use 24 had actually come up, so if, if the land is ever to go back from public semi-public to anything else, it would have to go back through the same process of planning.
100%, 100%. And also, both of these pieces of property have been in public owners- And also, both of these pieces of property have been in public ownership for over a decade. So, this is not something that just appeared overnight. This has been a long time coming, and they've been studying the Greenway Trail for quite a while, and, yeah, this is, we're late to the party on this one.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a question to follow up on Commissioner Moreno's comment. Could it ever revert back to, could this land ever revert back once it's designated?
I mean, certainly, if the city at some point chose to develop it or sell it to some, you know, in some way to somebody else who wanted to develop it in a way that was inconsistent with the public quasi-public, they would have to come and get another plan amendment to something else. So, they could utilize it for other uses besides a park under the public, I mean, but they'd have to be a public use, public, you know, consistent with the land use category. Anything?
So, they could build like a community center or something like that on it?
Yeah, sure. Fire station, you know, other public uses, yeah.
But not commercial?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay, you'd said that this has been owned as by the State of Florida or by City of Tampa? I was confused.
So, there are two parcels in this, and the large parcel that's just over 14 acres that actually fronts Manhattan is owned by the State of Florida. The smaller parcel is 2.4 acres, and it is actually the right-of-way. It's like a rail right-of-way goes, looks like it goes right down to MacDill Air Force Base, and that is owned by the City of Tampa.
Okay. And then?
And both of them are to be used for the South Tampa Greenway.
Okay.
Just a couple of comments. And I guess my primary concern is with the flagpole, the 50-foot easement that was once the rail right-of-way. Because the South Tampa Greenways and Trails does exist on the east side of Manhattan right now. And I guess the concern would be, if you're going to change the alignment of the greenways and trails through there, so that it takes the railroad alignment, it's going to come into Interbay Boulevard right where our truck entrance is at MacDill Air Force Base. So, we have a westbound left-turn lane there, and we will soon have two eastbound turn lanes going into the truck entrance from Interbay Boulevard. So, that alignment will, if we're truly going to change where the greenways and trails turns and goes north, that'll have to be dealt with in design. And just secondly, more from the planning perspective, and we just had the, we just had the report in the regular meeting this afternoon, really showing the lack of industrial property, especially within the City of Tampa of developable parcels. And by putting this public quasi-public piece of property through what is industrial property on either side of that, it seemed like it would inhibit the development of that as an industrial parcel in South Tampa, if someone wanted to put those parcels together. So, once again, like we just said, if someone would want to come and do that, they're going to have to go back through this whole process again and take it from public semi, or public quasi-public back to some sort of zoning or some sort of land use, which will allow them to have an industrial zoning, which you don't have with this proposal. So, those are a couple of concerns, just for the South Tampa community and for MacDill Air Force Base in particular.
Yeah, I guess I'm not sure about, what's the current status of the property? I mean, I know it's owned by the state, the 14-acre site. I know, understand the other part is owned by the City of Tampa, but the 14-acre site, to me, looks like it's just vacant land. It's not a programmed space. Is that correct?
That is correct.
It's really not a park?
That is correct. It is not dedicated as a park. That is correct.
Okay. So, and then do we know what, is there a plan for the city, for the state, for what they would like to have?
So, yes, there is a South Tampa Greenways and Trails plan, and it does go through part of this. Part of the South Tampa Greenways and Trails has actually opened up in Gadsden Park, which is like a mile or so on the other side of the peninsula. So, this was actually purchased with funds through the state for recreation use. So, this will be a recreational use of some sorts, or there would have to be one of those above-my-pay-grade land swaps that Tallahassee does at times. So, but is there a dedicated park ready for it? No. Is it programmed? That's the issue of what I was talking with the commissioner earlier, that this portion of the trail that actually traverses the boundary of the Air Force Base is planned, studied, not planned, funded. So, you see where what this is doing is this is all moving us in this direction to actually get ourselves ready for planned-funded by having the land use in the right area, and then also at that time, sure, having more conversations with the Air Force Base, as well as the community as a whole, because at that time, there'll be some real money that will be spent to actually do the trail.
So, on page eight of the staff report, there is that Trails map, and I guess I'm trying to understand, we see where the existing trail is, like on the, along Manhattan. I don't see that it actually going through the site, the subject site. Is that going to change? Like, how does this Trails map relate to what you're talking about?
So, currently, there is an existing trail that fronts the front portion of that property, right? The 14-acre property. They then have also mentioned, and we're on, how about this?
There we go.
We're on the back portion of that, what we're talking about, with that 50-foot right-of-way, that 50-foot right-of-way that's owned by the City of Tampa that goes north-south. So, those are the two areas that are looked at for the trail, and then the area in the middle of it, which is still that 14 acres, can be programmed as a park. That park has yet to be established, whether it is a 100% passive park, right? Where you just have open space, almost as though it were, I'll use the term ELAP, but not ELAP, but you get where that's going, or whether it's something that actually is more of what Ms. Ornita mentioned earlier about a community center or something that's in it. That remains to be seen, but what they do have is planning for the actual greenway.
So, Jay, on the map, can you just point out where the property is on this map?
So, where we are, right in this area right here, the solid green line is an existing trail, the darker solid green line. The lighter green line that actually traverses the Air Force Base and then juts upright in this area is the planned, yet not funded, it's only studied. And this little 50-foot right-of-way is one side of it, and then we have this side of it over here, that is going through basically bisecting or going on each side of it, excuse me, bookending this 16 and a half acre site.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
And just to follow up with what Jay's saying, MacDill Air Force Base has been an active partner with the City of Tampa in developing this greenways and trail alignment. I mean, we started working this back in 2004 with the city, and we currently have, I believe, a 25-year lease with the city for the alignment that he's showing along the northern boundary of the base. And we're also negotiating right now, or starting negotiations, to extend that beyond that 2029 horizon, because we believe that that's going to benefit the community as well as MacDill Air Force Base. So, we're working with the city on the greenways and trails alignment.
Okay. Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This may not be the right time, you know, what I'm going to ask, but I'm kind of curious as with Commissioner Moreno, since this is kind of your area and where you live and everything. To me, it seems like I'm concerned, echoing some of my other commissioners, about, you know, the loss of, you know, potential industrial space, and there's not, you know, just a ton down there, you know, and this is going to be probably turned into some type of park, and we've got Picnic, you know, Island and all that, you know, so close by, which is a huge park, and it's gorgeous, you know, it's waterfront. So, it seems to me, in my thought process, that, you know, you don't need, you've got another park, you've got another park. I'm not sure how many parks you actually really need down there, but is this, you know, something that the community, you know, you've mentioned Civic Association, this is, hey, this is, we've been dying for this last 10 years, or, you know?
I'll just ask, any other comments, questions? Commissioner Moreno?
Yeah, if I'm allowed to respond, at least as it relates to this particular property, the neighborhood has been seeking a connection to Picnic Island right now. You cannot walk to Picnic Island. There are no sidewalks on either side of Commerce Street, which is the road that goes to Picnic Island. That's heavily used by trucks. So, putting a sidewalk there probably isn't the safest thing, so having this access would be beneficial. To Commissioner Rodriguez's point, the industrial uses down there, there are existing uses that are closer to Picnic Island. I don't want to speak for anyone else who lives in the neighborhood, because I'm not speaking on their behalf. I can only repeat what was said in the meeting regarding this particular project. I can tell you, I think the biggest use right now of that piece of property is that it's used in the evenings by people who don't have another place to go, and that's where they sleep. So, that's the only thing going on on that property right now.
If I could just add, I mean, this property is in public ownership. That's what the public semi-public land use category is to recognize. If we were to recognize that this was somehow going to continue to be viable for other non-residential uses, industrial or otherwise, I think that would be doing a disservice to the plan, because it's in public ownership. It has, I mean, I believe the city and the state have full intentions of utilizing it for some public purpose, and I would rather us have a more accurate and transparent future land use map. So, that's the intent of why we're trying to do these changes to the TU 24 category, partly because the category is broad and is, and when we see that there's a trend towards certain land use categories, we think it's better to articulate that in the future land use map, but also to make the map more accurate, because if then we go and pull, as Jay and Jennifer did in the industrial lands study, what is available for development, and this, it's not accurate to show that this is Transitional Use 24 and available for industrial development. That's not accurate. That's why we changed the school to the north and some of the other schools to, again, be accurate about their ownership and what their future entitlement is.
Okay, Commissioner Willman?
I guess I just feel more comfortable, like, not referring it to it as a park, because it's really not a park right now.
Fair enough.
And if it's just, if it's because it's publicly owned, that makes sense. It can be done, you know, something could be done with it under that public land use category. So, for that reason, I'm, you know, I would be comfortable with the amendment as proposed, but I think it's just important to not misrepresent what might be done with the site.
Fair enough, yeah.
I mean, the trail might go through, the trail might go through it, doesn't mean it's going to become a park, just having the trail go through it.
Commissioner Dowdy?
I'd like to move that we find proposed future land use designation CPA 1903 consistent with the Imagine 2040 Comprehensive Plan.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dowdy, a second by Commissioner Joseph. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, Tampa Comprehensive Amendment 19-05.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Jay Collins, Planning Commission staff. The next one tonight is TACPA 19-05. This is directly next door to what we just spoke about. So, again, we are in South Tampa Planning District, Gandy-Sum Bay South, but now we are actually focusing on Lois Avenue instead of South Manhattan. So, the plan amendment site is outlined here in yellow. Basically, this is an existing apartment complex. Just to the east of that apartment complex, across Lois, you can see another apartment complex further to the south hitting Interbay. You can see more apartment complexes, multifamily housing. And then, what we just saw on the previous amendment, you can also see the Transitional Use 24 running on the west side of Lois, as well as on the north side of Interbay, with some of those intensive commercial, as well as industrial uses that are occurring there. And then, again, the ever-present single-family detached that rings the entire neighborhood, as well as Robinson High School just to the north. So, this is publicly initiated. Again, this is part of the Transitional Use 24 Land Use Viability Study, in which we are looking to provide a trend analysis to basically figure out whether or not the land use that is appropriate there, being the Transitional Use 24 is appropriate, or if there would be a more appropriate land use for that area. This is a regular-scale amendment, just over 14 acres, and staff is asking for Residential 35 on this piece. So, let's take a little walk around on South Lois Avenue. These are the apartments that are directly across the street. This is the gardens at South Bay Apartments on South Lois Avenue. Lois Avenue looking north, I'm actually south of the subject site here, looking north back up. You can see a little bit of the wall to the apartment complex in this, oh, come on, in this general area right here. Just to the south of it, there's another picture of it, but that's actually a landscaping business. And you can see on the east side, again, the wall to the apartment complex on that side. So, let's go even further north. So, now I'm on the north side of the subject property. This is getting close to, obviously, it is, single-family housing on the east side of Lois. And then, on the west side of Lois is Robinson High School. There is a little bit of a different flavor over here. Lois Avenue dead ends into Robinson High School. Manhattan, where we just were and talked about, goes from Interbay all the way back up to Gandy. So, this is just a little nook, if you will. South of the subject site, this is basically that land use, landscaping, thank you, landscaping business that we spoke of. And then Lois Avenue, again, looking further to the south, the landscaping is just over there to the west, and again, over to the east, you once again see the apartment complexes. It's interesting to note here, the types of uses that we have down here, the amount of density that we have down here, and Lois Avenue with some of the issues with the open ditches and other things. So, it's an issue that obviously Lois Avenue and the city needs to look at. So, this is Interbay Self-Storage on Interbay Boulevard. Again, this is that Transitional Use 24. This is an open store, so you've got RVs, you've got boats, and the like there. So, property notice, we wanted to specifically take a moment to talk about this. We did send three certified mailings to the property owner in Hollywood. This includes the entire packet that went there. We did receive notice that they received all of that information, but we have not yet heard from the property owner. When I went out to put the signs up, I went into the leasing office, spoke with the leasing manager, spoke with the facilities manager, told them what it is going on here, basically gave them a little bit of information, simply to say, if your residents start asking you what's happening, here's what you can tell them, and then here's my card if they're still not comfortable with your answer. So, the adopted future land use map, again, showing you the Transitional Use 24, also Residential 35 directly to the east of the subject site, as well as some Residential 20s to 20 north and east of the subject site, Residential 10 to the north and the east of the subject site, the Transitional Use 24 to the south. If the amendment were to be approved, showing the Residential 35. So, some of the potential intensities and densities here. The existing would be 344 units. Currently, they actually have a PD on this site for 288 units. Just over 900,000 square feet of commercial uses could be allowed if they did not have that multifamily on there. Transitional Use 24 is an either-or, not a both. The potential for Residential 35, just over 500 units, again, an either-or. I will say that locational criteria is not met here, so there is that. We do put 375,000 square feet down there, because, again, neighborhood support uses. So, if they wanted a church, that does not need to meet locational criteria, then you could ask for a church that's several hundred thousand square feet if you wanted to. The amendment, if approved, would remove from consideration the following zoning classifications. None of these zoning classifications are utilized by the property for an apartment complex. It would remove industrial- It would remove industrial general, commercial intensive, and commercial general. So some of the consistency with the housing section of the plan is to ensure an adequate supply of housing to meet Tampa's needs. Again, there are thousands and thousands of people that are projected to come into the city of Tampa in the planning horizon. Provide additional workforce housing close to employment in or multimodal facilities. As we've mentioned just in the previous, MacDill Air Force Base is located just south of the subject site. MacDill Air Force Base, between civilian and federal employees, there's just over 17,000 people that are employed by the Air Force Base. Some of the future land use policies, again, to sustain multifamily residential areas, we've shown that there is multifamily that exists along this section of Lois Avenue, and promote a residential strategy that increases the availability of housing at densities that promote walking and transit use near those employment concentrations or residential services and amenities. And again, this also does have an affordable housing component in it. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission find the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 240 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. I thank you for your time. This concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Would the city like to speak? Randy?
There were no objections, yeah, no objections by the city of Tampa.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on this item? No public comment? Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I'm a little confused on this one. This is an existing apartment complex. So this amendment, if approved, would allow them to, to tear this down and build it at a greater intensity?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. Not add on to what's there now.
I mean, I don't know enough about how their project is designed, as to whether or not there's land to add on to what's there now, but I, I mean, I, I would think they would need to truly redevelop the site to take advantage of the type of density that would be allowed by this category.
Okay.
And, sir, they would also have to rezone the property to do that. So this does not give them that right.
Right.
It just, it allows them the opportunity to ask to rezone. Doesn't give them the units.
Right, right. Okay.
Commissioner Rodriguez? Oh, Commissioner Dickerson? I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I don't speak that much. So we are experiencing a lot of growth in South Tampa. Westshore Elementary is the assigned elementary for this property, and Roberson, Robbinson High School is the high school assigned to this property. The applicants at this time, it shows that they, they probably won't meet the level of service for elementary and high school. They do have an avenue at site plan to do a proportionate share mitigation agreement for that, so I just wanted the applicant to know that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Someone like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion.
Okay. Commissioner Willman?
I move that we find the proposed future land use designation change for City of Tampa CPA 1905 from Transitional Use 24 to residential 35 on the 14.36 acres, consistent with the Imagine 240 Tampa Comprehensive Plan, and forward this recommendation to Tampa City Council.
Okay. We've got a motion by Commissioner Willman, a second by Commissioner Moreno. Any further discussion before we vote? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next up is, last up, Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment 19-06.
Good evening, commissioners. David Hay, Planning Commission staff. The next and last amendment is a text amendment. It is text amendment 1906. A little background regarding the proposed amendment. The city of Tampa has submitted this text amendment after discussions with stakeholders, property owners, and Planning Commission staff. Currently, under the Community Commercial 35 and the Community Mixed Use 35, future land use categories, vertical mixed-use development located on arterial roadways meeting acreage requirements can get a bonus to their buy-right FAR ratio going from the 1.0 FAR to a 1.5 if they're meeting those requirements under that bonus. This amendment would extend that bonus to collector roadways within the city of Tampa's designated urban villages. The, as of right now, all development on the city's collector roadways located within that Community Mixed Use 35 or the Community Commercial 35, future land use categories, again, is capped at a 1 by right, with the option to enter into a development agreement to help fund identified improvements to get to the maximum of a 2 FAR. Some developers have stated that this payment reduces the financial viability of constructing vertical mixed-use development. This amendment would reduce the potential bonus payments, thus further incentivizing the preferred identified development pattern on the city of Tampa's main quarters. We did send this out to review. There were no objections from any of the reviewing agencies, and Planning Commission staff has reviewed the Comprehensive Plan and found the proposed language to amend the Community Mixed Use 35 and the Community Commercial 35, future land use categories, consistent with the adopted policy guidance within the Comprehensive Plan. We found two main areas of consistency. The first are policies dealing with the promotion of a mixed-use development pattern, especially along the city's main quarters. And the second area dealt with the promotion, if my tablet works, the promotion of a sustainable form of development within the city's identified urban villages. The vertical mixed-use is one of the preferred ways of providing that sustainable development pattern, that mixture that's sought for in, in those urban villages. So based on that, the Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed text amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 240 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Does City of Tampa want to comment on this?
Because there's no objections. We're part, part of the staff that worked on it, so we're actually, obviously supportive of it.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on this item?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is David Mechanic, 305 South Boulevard, Tampa, Florida. I'm here on behalf of ABC Capital, a property owner in the West Tampa Urban Village, and I'm here on, in support of the proposed text amendment. Review of all the policies that are in the plan regarding urban villages suggests that the whole point of the urban villages is to promote mixed-use and higher-density development in those locations. So this particular text amendment will, in fact, accomplish or better accomplish that objective, and so for that reason, we as one property owner would support the amendment. And I would also point out that the encouragement of higher densities in those villages will also support additional transit service, because we all know that density promotes the use of transit. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Any questions from commissioners? Okay, no questions. Oh, Commissioner Moreno?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, that's good.
I, I move that we find Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment, TACPA 1906, consistent with the Imagine 240 Tampa Comprehensive Plan, and forward this recommendation to Tampa City Council for its consideration.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Moreno, second by Commissioner Powell? Okay, got a second by Commissioner Powell. Any further discussion before we vote? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, that was our last item. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.